Everybody ready? Everybody all good?
Okay, perfect.
Two seconds.
Are we live? Okay. Okay, everyone, welcome to our July 8th, 2024 special counsel meeting in our council chambers. Roll call, please.
Mr. Consul Magno.
Here.
Ms. Kameneke.
Here.
Mr. Oaks.
Here.
Mr. Sensi.
Here.
Mr. Janisak.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins.
Here.
Mr. Espinar.
Ms. Garrus.
Here.
Ms. Flynn.
Here.
Eight members present, please now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, I'd now like to move to the public comment section and Mr. Mongello and Mr. Vince Kelly.
Thank you very much. So I'm here tonight for, and we're all here for a public hearing pursuant to Chapter 27 of the municipality of Bethel Parks Code of White Ordinances. And the purpose of the hearing is to determine whether the property located at 3204 Comanche Road within the municipality, and that's block lot 477D50, whether or not that property should be demolished. Each of you have a packet, should have a package of exhibits in front of you. That's what we're going to be looking at tonight and Kelly will be discussing. And my name is David Mongello. I'm with the law firm of Tucker, Aron, and Burke, who is solicitor for the municipality. I'm going to present the testimony, as I mentioned, of Vince Kelly, the municipality's residential building inspector. You'll have an opportunity to ask Mr. Kelly questions, and please feel free to do so during his testimony. The property owner and property owner in any interest of parties will also have an opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Kelly if they attend the hearing. The property owner and in any interest of parties will also have the opportunity to present any testimony or evidence that they wish, again, if they attend tonight. And you will be able to ask them questions if they do so. At the conclusion of the hearing, Mr. Kelly's going to make a recommendation for you that you may follow, you may reject, or you may modify. And then immediately following our hearing, you will take a vote on basically whether or not to demolish this property. So I'll start off presenting my witness, Mr. Vince Kelly. Do you want, can you be sworn?
I'll just read the testimony. I'll just read the testimony. You're about to be the judge of the court.
Okay, Mr. Kelly, so can you first, for counsel and for the court reporter, state your name and your position within the municipality of Bethel Park?
My name is Vince Kelly, construction code official. I've been here for four and a half years.
Okay. And can you describe the process to become certified as a construction code official?
So I've studied books, take exams for the UCC and ICC and get the appropriate certification.
And what are your duties in your position?
Residential building and zoning code compliance and property maintenance.
And as part of your duties, do you enforce Chapter 27 of the Bethel Park Code that incorporates the International Property Maintenance Code of 2015?
Yes.
All right. And I want to turn now to Exhibit 1. And this is, is this first Chapter 27 of the Bethel Park Code on the first page?
Yes.
And then the second page, and I have another copy of that.
No, that's okay. We're fine. Thank you.
You were trying to cut our mayor out. That's one vote against you. Sorry about that. Okay. And then turning to the second page of Exhibit 1, Section 110.1, sort of down the middle of the left half of the page, states that demolition shall occur when, in the code official's opinion, the structure has become, and this is the quoted section, "so deteriorated or dilapidated, or has become so out of repair as to be dangerous, unsafe, insanitary, or otherwise unfit for human habitation or occupancy, and such that it is unreasonable to repair the structure." Does that state that in the IPFC 2015?
Yes.
Okay. And now, so that's the standard that councils should use to make a decision whether to demolish this home?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. And now, turning to Exhibit 2. What is this and what do these pictures show within this exhibit? And maybe we can go sort of one by one, first page, second page, so everyone can follow along with it.
Sure. So first page is a picture of 3204 Comanche Road in February 21st, 2024. Just showing the basic current condition of it. Front gutter's fallen off, the porch, front porch is starting to collapse. You know, you can see there's a lot of paint and things like that missing off of it. There's woodpecker holes in all the posts that are holding the porch up. You know, it's just in pretty rough shape.
Okay. Maybe let's go to the second page now.
Okay. Second page shows the side porch. All the soft that's falling off, it has big holes in the roof. It's been collapsing for quite some time. The whole thing's leaking everywhere. You know, this is just, again, the bad condition of the house.
Okay. And now the third page, what does that show?
Third page is that side porch roof, and you can see that there's holes through it. The shingles on the main roof are very worn. I suspect that they were probably leaking as well, but I didn't have anything to go inside to take a look at the inside just yet.
Okay. And let's turn to the next page.
Next page shows the overgrowth. We got dead trees, lot of weeds and bushes that are just overgrown and overtaking the house.
Okay. And then the next page after that?
That's also the dead tree. I think it was a utility company put a red X on it, and they also had a notice on their door that it had to come down, so.
And the red X indicates that it's?
That it was that tree that had to come down.
Because it's dead and maybe would impact power lines?
Yeah, it would probably fall on the road. Yeah.
Okay. And turning to the next page?
Again, showing, showing all the overgrowth around the house. You can tell it's not maintained very well at all.
Okay. And the next page?
Again, overgrowth on the other side of the house. It's, you know, going out into the road.
Okay. Turn to the next page.
Again, vines and overgrowth growing up on the house. And this is in February, and, you know, it was pretty bad, so, you know, when spring hits, it's going to be worse.
Right. Okay, turn to the next page.
Same thing, just how overgrown everything is.
Okay. And you said all these pictures were taken on February 21st, 2024?
Yes.
And at that point, you mentioned you didn't have the ability to go in the house. Why is that?
Because I didn't have, I had to send notices of violation for the overgrowth and dangerous structure first.
Right.
And take them through the process of that. If they would respond to the violation letters, then I would be able to work with them possibly. There was no response to the violation letter, so it went to citation.
Okay. So seeing the sort of exterior here, the next step you took was what?
Was send violation letters. Like I said, then there was no response to those. So ultimately, I sent citations. There was, again, no response to those.
Right.
So then it went to court.
Right.
After court, nobody showed the court either. They were, they were fined $1,000 for each offense. And then the day after, I got an administrative search warrant to go into the house, to check the house for structural, how structurally sound the house was.
Right.
Because typically, when a house is this bad on the outside, it's way worse on the inside.
And an administrative search warrant, is that something you received from?
From Judge Orno.
Okay. The district judge. And that's what allows you to actually go in a home when you don't have permission from the owner?
Right, yes.
And then, so turning now to Exhibit 3, you mentioned violation notices for the overgrown vegetation where you're just looking at?
Right.
As well as the unsafe structure with the roof caving in and those types of things?
Yes.
Were these, these the two violation notices you sent?
Yes.
Okay. And they were sent on, both on February 21st, 2024?
Yes.
The same date of those pictures?
Right.
Okay. And those were sent to, looks like Gary McClatchy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. At 725 Service Creek Road, Alcoa, PA?
Yes.
Okay. But these related to the 3204 Comanche property?
Right.
And you said there was no response from Mr. McClatchy to these letters?
No.
Okay. And then turning now to Exhibit 4, what are, what are these? What is this?
This is the proof that the violation letters were certified mail. We did, we normally certify mail and do regular mail.
Right. So there was notice of violation that we just looked at. You sent certified mail to Mr. McClatchy?
Yes.
Okay. And then turning now to Exhibit 5, what are, what does this exhibit show?
So these are the citations that were written after there was no response to the violation letters.
Okay. And these were citations to, who are these sent to?
Gary McClatchy. He's the owner of 3204 Comanche.
Mm-hmm. And it looks like you issued, issued these on February 27th, 2024?
Yes.
And again, any response from Mr. McClatchy?
No.
Okay. And then turning to Exhibit 6, what is this?
So this is the notice from the district judge scheduling a trial on May 22nd, 2024.
Okay. So you submitted this for a trial for violations again? And this was for violations both of the overgrown weeds and also the unsafe structure?
Yes.
All right. And it was scheduled, did you say for, for May 22, 2024?
Yes.
And I think you mentioned this earlier, but that resulted in fines to Mr. McClatchy?
Yes.
Okay. How much, how much in fines?
It was $1,000 for each offense.
Okay. And at this point, you had still not seen the inside of the home, is that right?
Right, yes.
Okay. And then you mentioned earlier, in order to do that, you then filed for a?
Administrative search warrant, yes.
And then turning to Exhibit 7, what is this? What is this?
So that's the administrative search warrant from Judge Orno, district judge, and that was on June 7th, 2024.
To allow you to enter the home?
Enter the home, yes.
Okay. And then when did you actually enter the home to inspect it?
Same day, June 7th, 2024. Code enforcement and Bethel Park Police entered the home. I gathered evidence of the structural stability of the home. And then, you know, started the process of possible demolition.
Right. And on that Exhibit 7, under the reasonable cause affidavit section, you mentioned the reasons that you needed to enter the home. Basically, it was an unsafe structure, unfit for human occupancy, and also you wanted to take pictures of the current condition for possible demolition. Those are your reasoning?
Yes.
Okay. You filled all this out?
Yes.
Okay. Now, turning to Exhibit 8, what do these photographs show?
So these are photographs from the inside of the home. The first one was?
And these were taken on June 7th? Is that when you entered the home the first time?
Yes, yeah.
2024.
2024, yes. The, this first one was the hallway showing the mold. It was on all the walls, the whole house is filled with mold. It was so bad that when we opened up the door to go in, the smell of mold was so bad, we had to go and put our respirators on to, not like a little paper mask, a full respirator because the mold smell was so bad in the house. So this picture is just showing how much mold was on the wall going down to the basement.
Okay. Let's turn to the second page.
Second, second page is, that's mold, some animal feces on the stairs, all mold on the stairs, all over the walls.
Okay, third page?
Third page is the basement. The ceiling collapsed because the main house roof is leaking so bad. All the carpets are wet upstairs. The, that, everything in there just has mold all over it. The basement was probably the worst. You know, just, there's mold in the rafters, there's mold all over the walls, there's, there's just mold everywhere.
And this mold with the, the sort of, this mold is happening why? Because of the rain?
Because of, yeah, the main roof leaking, yes.
And the, and the water dis?
And this doesn't happen overnight. This has been like this for a long time.
Yeah. Any idea how long that this could take to happen?
Probably a couple of years.
Yeah, okay. Okay, let's turn to the next page.
Again, that's the basement, and just, I wanted to show how much mold was on the lap boards of the ceiling. You know, there's, it's, it's the worst mold that I've ever seen.
And how long have you been?
Well, I was general, I was general contractor for over 26 years, and then I started this job, but I've done a lot of jobs, a lot of remodeling, and this is by far the worst.
Okay. Let's turn to the next page.
So again, this is the part of the ceiling that collapsed on the stairwell going down to the basement. You can see that's all black mold on top of that drywall.
Okay. And turn to the next page.
And again, furniture, just showing the furniture and everything down the basement, showing all the mold everywhere.
And when you say there's mold, I'm looking at this, I, can you just point out the areas where there is mold that you saw?
So the, the chair rail going across the, like, the white film that you see?
On the left side of the picture?
On the left side of the picture, that's all mold. All over the white film that you see, all over the furniture, and the black spots everywhere, that's all mold.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Turn to the next page.
And again, just showing the mold on the steps, mold on the walls going down, down the stairs.
Okay, so on the stairs, and this is the picture with your feet sort of in the bottom?
Yeah.
And you took all these pictures, correct?
Yes.
And, and you're saying on the stairs, that sort of brown gunk that's all mold?
Yeah, that's all mold, also.
And at the bottom of the stairs, that's all?
Yes.
All that black?
That's all mold.
Okay. And on the wall on the left?
On the left, yeah.
Okay. All right. Yes. Okay, and let's turn to the next page.
So that's the going, coming in the front door, that's the banister going up, that's all green mold on the banister.
That sort of dull film?
Yeah, that dull film, that's, that's all green mold.
On the posts and then also going all the way up?
Yes.
Okay. Turn to the next page.
Again, you got black mold on the stairs and the green mold on, on the banister.
All right, and it turns to the next page.
The bathroom's also just full of mold, the toilet, the walls, the floor, the bathtub.
And how about the wall along the sides? Is that sort of bowing?
Yeah, it's bowing, and that's, again, because the main house roof is leaking, so there was, there was, it was very damp in that house.
Right. Is there a concern about the structural integrity of the home when you have this amount of?
Well, it goes back to 2403 Milford. You know, that, when they, they started fixing that house up, that's what revealed how much mold that house had in it. And, you know, then the specialist, the mold specialist, Dave, or Ed Lampy, said that you can never get rid of that mold. It's in the framing, it's in, it's just in there everywhere. You can't get rid of it.
So what's the only option at that point?
Just to demo, demo the house.
And in terms of the mold in that property, you're saying this is worse?
Yeah, this is way worse. Yeah.
And, and let's turn to the next page.
Again, that's the sink in the bathroom, and showing the sink and the floor and the walls. I mean, it's just all mold.
Okay. And next page, is this the same bathroom?
Yes, same bathroom, just the overall picture.
And again, all that black stuff on the floor, that's all mold? It's not like dirt or anything?
No, it's all mold, yeah.
And the next page?
So this is the carpet on the first floor. All the black in the carpet is actual mold, it's not dirt. You can see the mold, the drywall that fell off the ceilings and the walls, that, that's all black and red mold. I've never seen red mold before. There's a lot everywhere.
And what room is this again?
This is the living room.
Okay. Next page?
So this is the dining room. It's just showing the ceiling collapsing because of the roof leaking. And also, there's mattresses in there. You can see like a greenish film on them, that they were all full mold, all the furniture had mold all over them.
Okay. And that, and there's a collapse sort of in the corner of the ceiling?
Yeah, that's what I said, the ceiling collapsed from the roof leaking.
Right. Okay, next page?
Again, the ceiling, showing the ceiling collapse. You can see the mold on all the walls and on the ceiling in there.
Right. Okay. Next page.
Again, showing all the mold on the furniture. You can see that box with the air conditioner unit sitting on it, how, about maybe four inches up the box, it's still wet. So that's how wet that, that house was.
Just the water?
Yeah.
Sitting on the floor? And again, all this black stuff?
Yeah, it's all.
And that's all mold?
Right.
On the, on the ground, on the floor?
Yes.
Okay. Next page?
Again, same room, but just showing the furniture having mold on it. That chair is just covered in green mold, the table, the couch, the, the, I don't know, whatever piece of furniture that is back in the corner, you could see a film on that whole thing too. It's, it's just all mold.
And that's a red chair, but it looks more white?
Yes.
A lot of mold. And then in the couch again, that, that sort of white stuff on the, on the?
Is mold.
Chair, on the arm, yeah, it's all mold. Okay. Next page?
And some more of the ceiling that fell, showing the black, green, and red mold.
Okay. And then, and, and then next pages, and again, what room is this again?
This is the living room.
Okay.
Yeah. So again, showing more of the ceiling and, you know, gives more of an overall picture.
That's a piece of ceiling that fell?
Yes.
All right. And mold all over the floor again, all that black stuff?
Right.
And the next page?
That's just the outside of the front outside. So the gutter's fallen off more than it was in February.
Right.
You know, the whole roof is sagging. You know, hard to tell from the picture, but it is.
And again, this was, this is a picture was taken on June 7th?
7th, yes.
And when compared to what you saw when you were in the exterior of the property back in February, had any work at all from your, what you saw, had any work been done?
No.
Okay. And then turning to the next page?
So again, showing that side porch, ceiling collapsing, and the overgrowth, how much more overgrown it's getting.
Again, had any, looked like any improvement or, or, you know, compared to what you saw in February?
No.
All right, and then the next page?
And you can see that beside the skylight now, there's a, a big hole on the left side also, so the whole, the whole porch roof's going to be coming down soon.
Yeah, so you have concerns structurally?
Yes.
When you see something like this?
Yes.
Can you explain that a little more?
So this just means that more and more water gets through. It's more of a chance of this collapsing at any, any time.
And you have those holes in the roof?
Yeah, because you have the holes in the roof, you got exposed wood.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, and that's the last page for Exhibit 8. So, and then, so after, you know, after June 7th, when you inspected the home, what was your professional opinion and what opinion did you come to with regard to what should happen to this home?
I deemed the house imminent danger and started the process of demolition.
Yeah. And, and what were the, what was your reasoning? Why do you think this home, we sort of talked about it, but why do you think it need to be demolished?
Because there's, there's no way of fixing up this house with how much mold is in it. There's just, there's no way. And that's not, and that's not showing you how bad everything, all the framing is, once you gut the house, you know? If you could find anybody to get it, you know?
The only thing you could do is basically tear it down?
Yes.
And so in your opinion, you know, going back to the standard we discussed earlier, was this home dangerous, unsafe, insanitary, and otherwise unfit for human habitation or occupancy such that it was unreasonable to repair?
Yes.
Okay. And so what did you do next?
So I began the process of then, to schedule a demolition hearing.
Okay. And now turning to Exhibit 9, what is this exhibit?
So these are the certified letters that went out to all the owners of the property. So the owner Gary McClatchy, the mortgage holder, Midwest Savings Bank, tax lien holders, Bethel Park School District, and Allegheny County.
Okay. And this letter was dated June 19th, 2024?
Yes.
And then if you turn to the next, I guess the third, third, fourth, and fifth pages of this exhibit on six page, and six, sort of the third page on, does this, these all show, it looks like these show that these letters were sent first class and certified mail?
Yes.
Okay. And going back to the text of the letter on the first page of this exhibit, it states, it notifies all these people, the owner and also the lien holders, there'll be a public hearing on July 8th, 6:30 PM tonight?
Yes.
To discuss whether to demolish this home?
Yes.
All right. And the letter looks like also, at the bottom of that same page, it states, "You are hereby required to commence the demolition and removal of the building within 10 days of your receipt of this notice," which was on June 19th, 2024, correct?
Yes.
And has the owner begun to demolish the home or take any action since this letter was sent?
No, there was no response.
Okay. You haven't spoken to anybody?
No.
No one's reached out to you?
No.
All right. And then now turning to Exhibit 10, what is this?
So this is the advertisement in the Pittsburgh Post Gazette for the, the hearing.
Hearing tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so, so this was advertised in the newspaper for the public that there's going to be a public hearing on this, this home and demolition. Okay. And now turning to Exhibit 11, what is this?
So this is the public notice that was put on the property, just notifying the, the residents that a, a public hearing was going to be scheduled for tonight.
Okay. And so this was posted on the property, was it posted on July 1st?
July 1st.
July 1st?
Yes.
Okay. And there's a couple of pages here, but it just shows the posting on the front door of the property?
Yes.
All right. And that's, that's notifying the owners or anyone else who would see it, that there's a going to be hearing tonight? there's going to be a hearing tonight?
Right, yes.
Okay, and you said no steps, steps been taken at any point up until tonight to demolish this property or take any steps towards remediating the problem here?
No.
And in all these pictures, that's basically the current condition of the property, is just like it was, that we just saw?
Yes.
Alright, and so what is your current recommendation with respect to this property?
To demolish the property.
Alright, and why, can you sort of explain why?
The building is damaged and decayed and deteriorated from its original value and structure. It's believed to have collapsed at times. Buildings beyond the point of repair cannot be brought into compliance with applicable codes. It is a fire hazard, is infested with mold. It represents an immediate health and safety hazard to the residents of Bethel Park.
Okay, I have no further questions?
Thank you, thank you both very much for the time. I know there's a lot of time and trips and paperwork involved, so thank you very much. I'd like to ask if there's any citizens for public comment. First, we'd like to start with proponents, people that are for the potential determination tonight, or, and if there's none, then second, opponents, people that are against, and if you'd come up and state your name and record for the address, please, or for the record, please. Okay, hearing none, I'd like to turn to our agenda items and potential determination to demolish 3204 Comanche Road. I have a motion that we approve the demolition of the property located at 3204 Comanche Road.
Your motion?
A second?
A second.
Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Conson Magno and a second for Mrs. Kameneki. That we move to approve the demolition of the property located at 3204 Comanche Road, Bethel Park, PA, 15241. Are there any questions or comments on this item?
Vince, just a question, when was the last time you thought, you think someone occupied that building?
Probably almost two years ago, but it was on and off. They weren't there constantly because the garbage would be taken out, and then they also had a water, or sewage bill, and it was weird because the sewage bill showed the usage for about four member families. I don't understand what all that was, you know, but it was two years ago.
Two years ago, and then, have you had any verbal contact with Gary McClatchy?
No, no.
Nothing at all?
I spoke with his son two years ago, and he started cleaning up some stuff. This was in 2022, and then he just stopped with everything and never returned any more of my phone calls, and then that was it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Yep.
I just wanted to make sure I understood, Mr. Kelly, you said that this mold was worse than the one on Milford that we brought to demolish last year?
Way worse.
Okay. That's all, Mr. President.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call for the, for the motion, please.
Mr. Conson Magno?
Yes.
Ms. Kameneki?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Flack?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Since this, there are no other agenda items for this, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second. No one favor?
Aye.
Thank you.